We're going to begin the meeting. Call the meeting to order, we're going to start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and silence your phone if you have it and need it. We are going to start with public comment. Seeing none. We are going to move on to our recognition. We do have a Hall of Fame person to vote.
So we received one nomination for the Hall of Fame and it is an administrator and his name is Ed Martin. He was a former Assistant Superintendent and also a principal of the high school.
Current resident of Edgewood, correct?
Correct.
That was very nice commentary too, right?
Yes, a couple of long letters, endorsements here that I sent around to the committee. Really glowing forum. Did you guys get a chance to read them?
Yes, they're fantastic. So I believe we just need to go ahead and vote that he will be our next inductee into our Educator Hall of Fame and the ceremony is scheduled to be on October 25th, 7:00 PM again at the Library Rotunda. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. All in favor? Or do we have to go?
Motion.
Motion, sorry, yeah. Excuse me, can I have a motion to?
I'll move to recommend Edward Martin for the Educator Hall of Fame.
All right, all, motion by Ms. Lynch, second by Mr. McDevitt, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Very exciting, congratulations.
So will you contact him?
I will.
Awesome. And will you let him know about the 25th?
Yes.
I'm sure.
Yes, sir.
We're going to have a student report this year.
I just noticed that last, is that going to be covered later on in the meeting?
Well, I actually have an update. I'm trying to tell you.
That's, right.
We have little Courtney and.
Courtney is now in college.
Yes, she is. Yep, and Cole, we couldn't track him down. That being said, after the last meeting, the members of the board and Superintendent Price asked if I'd speak with the high school principal about getting a few folks and it looks like he has two potential people to do it. He just has to confirm with them with a follow-up, but it looks like we'll have two very shortly.
I think it might be a good idea also if we could maybe, I think we discussed this at one point, but offer us a little bit of mentorship for our new members so that they have an idea of what we'd like them to share with us and how they would participate. And our esteemed Mr. McDevitt once had this role as a young man in school. Mr. McDevitt, would you be willing to be their mentor to get them kicked off? Is that all right with you all?
Yes.
I would be happy to make a motion to.
If you just want to have Mr. Jackson, I'll just reach out to him whenever he's ready.
I have the names, I just didn't know how official it was.
So let's, we should wait then.
They might have been Polaroids actually. Or those little discs, remember those?
All right, so we do have the consent agenda. The first is the approval of the minutes from the last meeting. They're in your packet. Open to a motion on that.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from September 7th as they are presented in the packet.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Turrisi, second by Ms. Lynch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All set, 5-0. And now we're going to move to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so I just have one thing to say and I, it's hard, so I'm going to read it. I want to let you know that this school year will be my last as superintendent of schools in North Andover. Tomorrow I will be appointed as the incoming head of school at a Boston area independent school. A position I will start on July 1st, 2018. Making the decision to leave North Andover and public education has been very difficult for me. In fact, when I was approached about this new position, I initially resisted even the possibility of making this move. Yet, in the end, I concluded that this opportunity is one that I should pursue not only for me and my career, but also for my family. I know that my departure marks yet another transition here in North Andover. For this, I am truly sorry. Yet, I hope that we can maintain the momentum that we have all created over the last two years. We are on a path in collaboration with the town that I am confident will continue to improve teaching and learning in North Andover. I promise all of you and everyone listening that I will work very, very hard this year to continue this progress and to ultimately help the next leader of our district to transition into the role. On a personal note, I cannot say enough about this amazing community and especially each of you in this room right now. The hardest part of this decision has been knowing that I will leave a community that has embraced my leadership and supported me both personally and professionally. You all are simply the best. North Andover is a very, very special place. I'm glad that we still have nine months together, but I know I'm really going to miss each of you and this community.
That's the superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you. I also have notes, so because I was afraid that it would all leave my head the minute you spoke. So obviously, this is something that we had not planned to work on this year. And, but it's something that we're all still processing, how we're going to move forward here. But rest assured that we, meaning the school committee, Dr. Price, the leadership team that works with Dr. Price, are all fully committed to driving all elements of our strategic plan for this year. And it's actually on our agenda tonight, so we'll talk about that. A lot of work has already been done, a great deal has been accomplished so far when you've been here, as long as you've been here, Dr. Price. And we have a full year of very focused activity planned ahead that will continue to improve teaching and learning here in North Andover. But as Chair of the School Committee, I will be in touch with faculty, staff, families, and citizens in North Andover over the next few days to outline a plan for identifying the next superintendent who will lead our district. I, and I'm sure all of us, recognize that this is very tough news to hear. Another transition, as Dr. Price said, is disappointing. However, we are in a much stronger place today than we were a couple of years ago. Plans are in place, leadership understands the areas of focus that are needed. And we will continue to drive forward with plans for our district. Would anybody else like to make any comments?
Sure. Obviously, you know, I share your disappointment as well. Being, you know, my motivation to run for school committee or get appointed originally was to help find a superintendent and I think we found a great one. And even at the time, and even when we renewed your contract this past, this past May, I knew that your time would, you know, would be brief here. Just because I just know how qualified and how attractive you are as a candidate to other, other schools. So I'm disappointed for us as a committee and obviously as a, as a district. But when you told me what the, the opportunity was going to be, I couldn't be happier for you and your family.
Thank you.
I think it's an incredible opportunity to move forward there. And we should be happy for you, even though it's, it's going to be, you know, more work for us going forward. But I'm confident we're going to do a great search. Hopefully, we'll do a search and, and find a worthy successor. So it's been fabulous working with you. I'm sure there'll be more accolades come, come June. But it's been fabulous working with you on, on so many different things. So I wish you the best and your family the best.
Thank you.
I echo everything that's already been said. It is a huge loss, but I think among, you've done so much here, so much, can't even list it all. But among one of your biggest and best contributions is you showed us how good we can be as a district. And we have a very good template in place to move forward. And not sure anybody can fill your shoes, but you've already put us so far ahead that we're still ahead of the game. So thank you for all, everything you've done.
So I would just chime in that I'm, I'm really proud of this committee and I'm really pleased that all of us did the work up till now. And, you know, the negotiation that we did in May, I think, put us in the best position to attract you long-term. I don't think there's another public district that could have lured you away. So I'm, you know, I'm pleased that we did that in good faith and could never fault somebody for doing what they think is right for their family. And, you know, so you will be missed, but we've got plenty of work for you to do between now and June.
That's right.
Feet to the bone, we're ready.
This is, this is a really hard conversation and it was really hard when we had it on Friday. I'm extremely grateful that you chose to come here and be part of this district. I think that you have shown us, as Holly said, that we can be a lot better and that we need to push the needle and continue to do that. And I think you've opened our eyes to other ways to do that. And I, I couldn't be more thankful for you partnering with us to do that. And I wish that we had had more time, but three years, you know, I'm grateful for the fact that we've had that, the opportunity. As David said, for you and your family is, is unbelievable. And I, I can't even, I can tell you how lucky they are because we know. When we sat in Newton and talked to everybody there, they were so glowing and complimentary and how much we were going to love working with you. And none of them lied, which is great. So I really am thankful, I mean, personally, you know, it's not just you being superintendent. You know, I feel like we were our friends and you are part of this community in so many ways and I thank you for that. So that's, that's all I can say right now.
So if any future candidate is watching this, they will know that North Andover is the right place to come because you guys are just amazing.
But if a future candidate is watching this right now, I really question their, you know.
Who's watching it?
They might go back and watch this.
But I'm just saying, like, I mean.
The 15 or 20 people watching right now.
Lots and lots of superintendents complain about their committee. There's just no way I would ever do that. You guys are amazing.
Let's do some work.
Yes, so I would like to point out that yes, we do have this whole year ahead of us and we'll get to that in just a moment. I just want to have a quick conversation about, you know, I believe that we need to put together a search. I know that some of the people on our, Mr. McDevitt was the chair at the time. Both Helen and Holly happened to be on the search committee the last time. So I do need, as we start thinking through all this, to gather together. It'd be helpful to have the job description before, who was on the committee before, any of those elements, if I can get them through Bev or through, Mr. Limpert was the chair of the, of the committee. So gather that stuff together to figure out the next steps. I'd be interested in each of you suggesting a candidate, anybody watching, and this will all come out in the letter. You know, if people are just in being part of this committee, I'm sure there'll be a statement of interest and need and things like that. So any comments on that right now before I'll draft a letter and get that out to the community about how this process might need to go forward?
Well, I think it has to go quickly. I would hope that we could, you know, at our next meeting, form a, a search committee. My recollection, I had just got on the board. It was, actually, it was September 18th and that the committee had already been formed and was already meeting. So if we're going to try to keep that same kind of timeline, you know, our next meeting is October 5th. Is that too soon, you think? Or what do you think, Ms. McDevitt?
I think we can, I think we can get a committee by.
I, I think we can start the process for that. If I remember back to the timeline, Columbus Day weekend is really when we first started to advertise.
Okay.
A position to be open. And so, I mean, I think we've got some, some time, but I mean, I think there needs to be some quick movement to try to develop a committee.
Yes, I would agree.
But was the, I mean, Helen and Holly had asked you, the committee was formed prior to this time.
Prior to Labor Day.
But did you, yeah, did you, did you folks draft the job description last time? Did you, I mean, I'm sure we can reinvent the wheel, but.
Exactly.
So I'm hoping we could have the job description from last, so at the next meeting, we can look at that. We can see if there's anything we want to adjust. Hopefully, have the elements of a committee and be able to announce that. I would like to be able to do that. If it's not reasonable, I'll be able to just say that.
I think too, David, we did a lot of groundwork with the community last time. I don't feel like our, our priorities have changed a lot in the last couple of years. I mean, people wanted to have more rigorous curriculum, we're putting that in place. Like, I think that coming from that search and, and feeding right into the strategic plan, we don't have the need. My feeling is we don't have the need this time to have parent-focused groups to find out what people really want. We don't have the need to have teacher-focused groups to find out what kind of, I just feel like that information that we gathered last time has, has really been put into place with the things that we've continued to do.
You had those focus groups.
We did.
The search committee prior to posting, you said you posted around Columbus Day?
If memory, I went back over some of my notes and I thought it was Columbus Day weekend because that, I don't know why. I just feel like it was an educational thing with the globe.
Like an insert or something?
Not like an insert, but like higher education, that's, that was like a, a big weekend for publicizing that.
We spent the first month just talking about what we wanted in the superintendent and like Helen said, talking to the groups and listing quality, like we did, she's right, we did a lot of groundwork that I don't feel we need to repeat.
I would agree.
And I think that a lot of the groundwork, information that we collected, we didn't necessarily use for the job description, but we used when we were weighing candidates, like, you know, what, what experiences were important to people? What qualities were we looking for? So that when we were going through the interview process, when we were reviewing the resumes, that's when we used.
When we formulated the questions.
Yeah, that's right, because you were there too.
I'll just say, from my perspective, when, I had obviously been appointed to the board when the, the search had already started. I, I think, I'd like to see more, so just for your edification, I don't know if you remember, but the search committee put forward just three names. And I would always said, and we really, us as members, I think Stan was the liaison to the, yeah, okay. So besides him, there was not, not a lot of, the search committee did their thing in the school and didn't get involved until there were three final candidates. I think, you know, I'd like to see at least in their mission or whatever, their, their charge to, you know, come back with at least five candidates that we can interview. Well, I mean, I guess, I guess it depends, but.
Up to five?
Well, you know, I think I need, need to think about it a little further, but I, I felt, obviously, I felt very good about the one candidate that we, we ended up hiring. I, I didn't think the, the, the other, but whatever, I, I think we didn't have more, more candidates.
We didn't select four, but one withdrew her name.
She did not want it.
I didn't, I didn't even know that.
And I think, David, when, when we looked at it, you know, like the cream rose to the top. There was a big gap between those people we put forward and.
That's why it's tough to have a number, could we be fluid in that and if we have some strong candidates to do that?
So the other thing I would ask you to think about having been part of these search processes is I was actually involved in a search the, a year earlier where they put five forward and I actually chose not to go forward because then you are making your name public. And so some people may be less willing to go public if they're one of five than one of three. Just something to think about, it is still your point, but you, you need to also think about, somebody may not kind of stick with it if, if there's a 20% chance and that means they're telling their current district that they're public. Just one thing to think about.
And I think one of the benefits of having a committee, to be perfectly honest, is to go through that process. They're going through interviews, they're, they're meeting with the candidates, they're reviewing all of that. That's the purpose of a committee, to help do that vetting process. And as I think you said, I mean, it, it, they separate themselves, you know, on some degree. And then, you know, you guys came up with four and one said, I don't want to wish, I don't wish to be public and then off we go. I mean, I, I think to then say, you know, we want five or seven or, you know, whatever it is, I, I think that diminishes the role of the committee.
But I don't dispute that, but the people that, besides the one liaison from this board who will be on that committee, I mean, it's our responsibility, we're responsible for hiring superintendent and basically approving the budget. You know, there's, those are the two main things that we're, we're hired to do, we're voted to do. And I think in some ways, we, you know, give up that, that authority, give that responsibility to non-elected people. You know, again, I couldn't be thrilled to get with who we hired last time. But like you said, the cream rose to the top. I, I don't know. I don't want to be disparaging with other candidates, but it wasn't really a choice at that point. So the, the search committee did the work. They chose, you basically Jen Price. There was no other, no other options.
Well, there were two other options.
Respectfully.
But it's not like those other two, they were better ones that were left out of the final three.
I think it's just something to keep in mind going forward and I don't need a, a hard number right now. And I don't even know what your goal is for tonight or to get anything out of time.
I just wanted to have a basic discussion since this is our first chance to talk about this.
And there was also, and again, I was told, I didn't have access to the, to even the resumes or, or anything like that, which I thought was kind of.
So Holly and I went to the Massachusetts School Committee Association training this weekend and they were saying that any pre-screening committee, then, if I understood this correctly, if you have a pre-screening committee, then the other school committee members who are not on that pre-screening committee cannot look at the resumes, but that's, that's how the law is written.
There are two school committee members on the search committee.
What law says you can't, the school can't look at the resumes?
That was my understanding of, of, so we can look at the, the mass school committee.
Might be a recommendation.
I can talk to Suzanne as well, she might be able to help us with this.
And you end up with two by having one person who's, who's the chair of the committee or who's on the committee and then ex officio the chair of the school committee, so that's how.
And you were the chair last time?
Yeah.
That's how you end up with two, other than after that word.
Right, I get that part.
Any other comes, so I'll gather as much information from last time as I can so that we can review that and hopefully get things underway at the meeting on October 5th. Is that reasonable?
One of the nice things about the search committee is that it was a nice mix of community. We had, you know, parents, teachers, parent groups, administrators.
Well, that's why I do want to, that's, it would be helpful to see what we had last time.
Representatives from the town.
If you could each send to me a suggestion, that would be helpful as well.
But I'm not clear, are you looking to, Sid, what type of people? Or are you looking to actually populate with actual people by next?
If you have an actual person you'd like to recommend as being on the committee, that person's still going to have to write a statement of interest, I would imagine?
Well, I mean, I think what we did last time was we had people, we put out something for people to then say, I am interested in serving. And then, I could be wrong, but I feel like we came up with 12 members. I feel like that it was about 12 people. We had representation, you know, from all over town. You know, Andrew Mailer.
Fire, police chief.
Police chief was on it at the time. We had administrators, I think there was one or two teachers and parents, some that were double-dipped as residents and also teachers as well, if I remember. I'm just, I'm trying to think of some of the names all the way through.
But do you recall, Andrew, Andrew, did, did the school committee take a vote to form a, a committee of 12 people? One person should be the police chief, one person should be assistant superintendent? Was it a very specific, like, description of, of the type of person? Or did you guys vote to, like, say, it was Chief Gallagher, it was, I think Andrew Mailer came after the fact, if I recall correctly. But how, do you remember how that was done?
We had some goals of cross-representation and then we looked at who the, who had applied and expressed interest.
Okay, but like, are we going to?
And then filled roles based on that.
We can go back and look at it a minute.
That's why, that's why I want to gather that together so we can maybe sort that out.
As a subcommittee, could it not be named by the chair?
That's, actually, I was under the impression I was supposed to name the committee.
That's, that's as I recall.
Or you just name the chair of the committee.
And the chair figures it out, okay.
Well, I think, you know, from my perspective, if, if you and someone else, whoever that person may be, are going to be the liaisons or, you know, your expert, that I think on the 5th you should come back. At least, this is what I would like to say, you come back on and tell us what the makeup, not the actual names of the people.
But the makeup of the committee.
The makeup of, you know, and maybe you could share if you have your notes from, from three years ago of, of how you did that, but.
Yep, okay, we can do that.
That sounds great. Any other questions?
I'm sorry, you're right, the text messages are starting to come in.
That's why I suggested that you not have your phone.
Can I just say, one said, "Nooo."
Letters have, just so everyone knows, letters have been sent to both the faculty and to the community already.
Thank you. Okay, so as Helen said a few moments ago, let's get on to the business of the day, which is, and that was my chair's report, by the way. Love to hear the school committee building, school building committee update, which is some exciting stuff.
This is good news.
It's actually very good.
It's really good news.
Here, Andrew, let me pass the, take one, pass it down, please. So, I'll tell you, I'm not going to talk about the kindergarten first, how's that? Let's talk about, let's talk about the middle school. As you folks are aware, we talked about it last week, the Massachusetts School Building Authority representatives came up to visit the middle school yesterday. We met with them at nine, from nine to 11 o'clock at the middle school. I want to thank Jen and Jim for putting together a fantastic team encompassed by myself and Christina Minicucci, who's the vice chair of the School Building Authority. Tom and Andrew Mailer was there and very helpful. The facilities people, Steve Foster, John Mullin, Greg Roberts?
Correct.
Greg Roberts, all very helpful and also obviously Principal John McQuade and it's just Steve Wrigley. Was it Steve? There's another Wrigley we met there on the course of our tour. But, but they, there was about six or seven folks from SBA that came up and we made our presentation of why we thought the middle school should be one of the finalists to be, I don't know what the right word is.
Invited to apply as part of the Massachusetts School Building Association.
So I, I think we talked about it last time that we got, we made the cut from like 86 down to 44 and the next cut will come at the end of November, early December, that 44 will be cut down to like 17 or 18. And I thought we made a great presentation. I was really happy with the, we, we had met on Monday. We kind of talked about who was going to say what and it really flowed pretty well, I thought. And you're just looking at, at body language and facial expressions, I really felt the, the people from SBA really understood our, our issues over there, the overcrowding issues especially. After that, we took a tour of the, the building, looked at some of the deficiencies there and they got, I think, a real, a real taste for what we, what needs to happen over there.
Yeah, I'd just like to add Andrew Mailer joined us and I thought he did a spectacular job really articulating the vision and the town, the town has done a number of different projects and that really that the middle school project is going to need additional funds. It's just too big of a project to kind of fit within our facilities master plan. And yet, also, like, we're a really thoughtful town around, you know, triple-A bond rating and, and all of that. He did a great job kind of saying, like, if you choose us, this is going to happen in terms of the town. Obviously, there's lots of votes and all those things, but, you know, we're, we're a good bet, which I think was great because as, if you read the papers, you see that there's lots of places that are really struggling. Wall fam, lol, even though they've been invited to apply and have even really been accepted in, they still aren't being able to deliver the product easily. So I thought it was really great to have him.
Yeah, yeah, and they're not, they're not looking obviously for what our solution is yet, by any stretch of the imagination. They're, they're looking to see if the problem is as real as we, as we know it is. And I think that's their, their, their task now. So the, the process will be, they'll visit these 43, 44 schools, whatever they are. They'll make a recommendation to their board, there's actually a board of directors for the SBA and they actually take the vote, I think it's the second week in December, about who to invite back to apply. After that, I mean, it's, it's probably, you know, another, you know, 18, 24 months of finding out what our solution was going to, would be, you know, so.
And it just gets us in the pipeline, I mean, that's the important thing.
So if we're selected in December, we then would have roughly 18 months to kind of architecturally come up with a plan or?
There's a whole process. I mean, one of the things that they do now is they really support you through each phase. So, so you just get into the process that the MSBA has put forward, so, and we can start immediately if we get selected.
So do they have a project manager or do we then have?
So if you call from, when we did the roof at the middle school and the windows at Atkinson and roof at Sargent, they give you a list of OPMs and architects that you can choose from, usually three or four.
Right.
And you can't ask if you've worked with somebody successfully to have them included if they're part of their program. They might be able to, but that's one of the first steps.
Okay.
And just, just for your edification, the, with the, it's a grant program, so it, it's a reimbursable grant. And just, just for your application, the, it's a grant program, so it's a reimbursable grant program. So they reimburse us for qualified expenses. It's not like the old days when, you know, schools would just go, I mean, the last real major project we had was the high school, and the high school was built under the old regs. So that was, I think we got a flat 63 percent, it took a while to get it back, but it was... And it's funded, the way SBA works, it's funded every single year from a penny on the sales tax, which translates to about $550 to $600 million each year, goes into a school building across the state. So the question that was asked was, you know, well, what happens if there's like one major project at $300 million?
That sucks everything up.
Yeah, it could suck everything up. But likewise, you know, if there's less big projects going on, there could be more schools that, you know, get funding, so... Anyways, it was a great meeting, I'm really happy with, you know, Jen and Jim, the team you put together to make that presentation. I thought it was, it was very effective. So thank you. Okay, now to what's really being built now. So I think the last time I talked about this, a couple of weeks ago, you know, we had got some original estimates in, and, you know, we thought they were on the high side. So we, you know, went back to the drawing board a little bit, pushed the architect and the OPM to come back with a plan. What I just passed out in front of you is the schematic design that the architect is now going to put together, and the school building committee yesterday voted to not only accept this, but also ask the architect to put forth the bid documents. So he's gonna make, he's gonna draft the bid documents based on the plan you have in front of us. It's, you know, as you can see, it doesn't look exactly like what you probably remember when we looked at those, all those options, probably almost a year ago now. You can see it's a little off-center now, it's, yep, a lot of that has to do with just the terrain. You can see, you know, 125 is right off there, but Jen, working with Mary Lou Connors and Judy Rogers, and obviously we didn't put for a bunch of teachers over the summer, really feel that this is an educationally sound, programmatically sound design, and it could be a real effective use of the space. And we are, I know Helen had a question, or maybe it was Andrew had a question last time, about being on time. Are we still on that same timeline? We are, we expect... Our OPM, who is responsible for keeping us on time and on budget, these bid documents, now the architect is working on them, will be probably ready to go out, probably at the end of October. At that point, you know, it'll be posted in the registry and different, obviously contractors will bid on this, and they will, there'll be an optional, you know, site visit for them to come and look at the site, because obviously the site presents a few challenges. But we do expect those bids to go out and probably by, you know, mid-November, mid-late November, we should know what, what we have, you know. We're hopeful that the bids will come in under our budget. There are some concerns with the, you know, a couple hurricanes we've had lately that could have an impact on construction costs. So we'll keep that in mind, but I know that the school building committee, we were up at the EEC last night for a couple hours, they're very excited about this plan. And I think we also agreed in the next week or so, we're gonna put together a letter and with some sketches to send out to parents as well, because some people over our... You know, I've heard stuff like, "Well, you guys are gonna build this, there's nothing going on up there." You gotta remember that when this is bid and then built, it's gonna be built, you know, someplace else. And it's a modular, so they come and they, you know, you'll see foundation work come in the springtime, March, April, you know, they'll put on the foundation, but as far as, you know, we're still, we're still on schedule, so make that clear.
Yeah, and just to be clear, I know for people who are watching or others, you know, we're looking at a design. The idea is to send out a communication to families next week and to teachers that will, that I'm working, we're actually gonna work with NV5, our OPM, so we have some drawings that people can look at. We also have a copy here, if anyone wants to look at it. But, you know, it is very similar to what we had talked about. It's 16 classrooms, which is what we had said we needed. There's a library music space, there is a cafeteria playroom space that, and then there's also a teacher's workroom space. We're also a few small reading, learning center, speech spaces, and then some redesign within the current ECC to make sure we can expand our nurses' office and our principal's space, and our conference room is big enough, and a counselor's space. So we're feeling very good about this plan, and based on what we had seen previously, we also actually really like the entrance area a lot better. You're coming in, you're right into the main office, it makes a lot of sense. So I do feel like we're delivering what we had said we would deliver with a little bit extra, actually, in terms of the library, the library music space, which is important for us to have a space where kids can go and do specials within the building. So it's within the square footage, so I don't want anyone to out there say a little extra was, it's the square footage we had recommended at town meeting, but we were able to be really thoughtful about making sure that this feels like a school.
Yeah, so the original, what we, what we had voted on before was a building of 23,500 square feet. We are bidding, so we are having a base bid, but we're also gonna have two alternates as well, in case it does come in lower, and the two alternates would be, one, making the caf gym place space larger as one alternate, another alternate would be to have a unified arts.
And science space.
And science place as well. So, you know, hopefully if, you know, the bids come in lower, that maybe it could be a little bit bigger. But we're gonna, you know, for the time being, keep it in the, the square footage that was approved at town meeting. Yeah, so it's, it's, it's moved along. I want to thank the school building committee for putting the time and effort into all this, and again, really want to thank the town manager for really stepping up and participating in some of these meetings, as well as problem solving around some of the site work issues that we're going to inevitably encounter, so...
Related to that, I think the number one question that, and we heard this this morning with the PTO presidents, is the, the whole traffic element, people are still... The second question, the one is, nothing's happening up there. The second one is, has any, are there any traffic plans, what's going on with traffic? That, I mean, once you're settled on this, then you can revisit that, is that correct?
Yeah, we've obviously engaged a local engineering, traffic, traffic engineering company that are working with us and looking at the site work, so they're obviously, they understand that that's Grand Central Station. That's ground zero for our education, and, yeah, I mean, I don't have, they don't, you know, definitive traffic plan at this point, but...
Underway.
They feel comfortable, they're gonna, they're gonna, gonna make it work in the long run. I mean, there's no question when there's site work being done, there's gonna be some temporary, you know,
Adjustments.
Adjustments going on, so I think that's, that's realistic to, to expect. Any questions, concerns?
You guys are working really hard, and I just want to thank you for that.
The committee's doing a tremendous amount of work.
Yes, and we have some real, real dynamite people on the committee who've just given a lot of good feedback. I don't think the OPM and the architect expected the level of sophistication and a lot of the questions and comments that.
That's great.
That our members are making, so I want to thank all of them.
Fantastic, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Trissey. So now we're gonna move on to old business. The first is the second reading on the approval for the overnight trip to Fort de France-Martinique. And I did look up, and they actually did not get damaged by Irma, and I don't know about by...
Maria.
Maria, but I don't think either, so...
So I had some quest, you had some questions, and I have the answers to the questions you all asked last time. Is there insurance for this trip? Members concerned with all storms, that if something were to happen, parents could get their money back. There is additional documents that are uploaded, and there is trip insurance. So I just want to let you know that there is trip insurance. I saw that actually on the forum website. Have we ever used forum language experience before? We actually use them for our Spanish and French exchanges. They have exchanges and they have immersion experiences. I was on their website today, this is an immersion experience, and it's a pretty popular one, and one that is, they say it's their most popular. And this is in addition, right now, this is proposed in addition to the French exchange. I think this is, many families don't want to send their children to Europe to study the language, but both students and parents have expressed enthusiasm for a home stay over a vacation, and that's why they're doing this. So whether both will be able to run, I don't know, but we're trying to just make sure that we meet the needs of our kids. So those are the answers to the questions you all asked.
Thank you. So are we still, as far as you know, I didn't ask this last time, but are we still having French students coming here in November?
Yes.
Okay. But we're not sending kids over there.
Correct, I believe that's correct. I believe that's correct. But this one is a brand-new trip to Martinique, and there's not, there's, is a difference between an exchange and an immersion?
Right, this is an immersion.
Is there any requirement for the number of participants to make the trip go?
I think it was nine on the website, but I would have to...
Okay, I just don't remember it being there, and then I know, was it to go to Quebec or Montreal?
They needed 15 for the bus.
They needed so many for the bus, and then at the end they couldn't get it.
What I read on their website was you need at least nine kids and one, for one chaperone.
Okay.
And again, it's a, it's a group we've used before, so...
So I will entertain a motion to...
I think the chair.
I'll entertain the motion, sir.
You're gonna so move, sorry, sorry.
Yes, so I would entertain a motion to approve the overnight trip to Fort de France-Martinique. Yeah, fair enough, we deserve a break today. So would you like to make that motion?
I would like to make a motion to approve as presented in the packet, the trip to Fort de France-Martinique.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Ms. Witzke Lynch, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? No? Five oh? Exactly. All right, DECA, suite of three trips, is the second approval. And these were pretty much verbatim from last year.
What we do every year, there weren't any questions on that last year.
Are we gonna approve these as all three together?
You can do them as all three together.
I entertain a motion for that, and we can discuss if we need to.
I will move that we approve as presented in the packet, the DECA overnight trips on November 2017, March 2018, and April 2018 for local, state, and national competitions.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McDevitt, second by Mr. Trissey, all in favor? Or any discussion? No? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Also a five oh. Next, we do have our strategic plan that we've talked about a couple of times here, and we're at the point where hopefully we can agree to that.
Yeah, there was one addition that actually came in from a community member, Chris Nobley, I believe, right?
Nope, it was Bill Callahan.
Bill Callahan, sorry. And it's interesting, in the previous iteration of the strategic plan, last year's, under Professional Practice Initiative III, which is the human resources area, it's green, if you want to look at the, this, the big one. We had increased the diversity of our faculty and staff to better reflect our student population, and somehow that did not make it into this year, so it was a great comment by Bill to say, "Wait a minute, we need to have a faculty," and it was totally within our plan, so we just added that back in. That really is the only change that we have made to it. And thanks to Bill Callahan for recommending that.
And it does, he did recommend toward the goals as well, we'll talk about it there.
And we did that in the goals also.
Any other discussion on this, or are we ready to have a motion to Mr. McDevitt? Would you like to do this?
I will approve, I... Wow, I can't even think tonight.
He doesn't even need us.
All right, call me Donald. I can't even think.
Somebody bail him out here.
Can I move to approve the strategic plan as presented in the document?
Second.
Okay, thank you by Ms. Bacard, a motion, and second by Ms. Lynch. Any other discussion? We've discussed this a lot, it's a solid piece of business here. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Work starts, or continues, I know it's already been going on. And then, next, we do have the goals for the superintendent's school committee. I think we can discuss a few things here, but I personally, I don't know if I can just throw this out here. I think, given the news tonight, we need to go back to the goals a little bit before, I don't think we're ready to vote on those six. I think we have to make some additions, particularly for the goal of hiring a new superintendent, yes. So, but there are other things that we did update that we should discuss.
Yeah, the only thing we updated was similarly, it's not, unfortunately, I don't think we reprinted it here, but we, I will make sure in the next one, as you approve.
I saw it, that was there.
I think it's on, we sent you electronically.
I have the wording right here.
Okay, is two.
So on, under three, goal number three, develop a comprehensive human resources model. Under bullet point number four, ongoing, identify and attend conferences, recruitment fairs that will help increase teacher applicants with diverse backgrounds and/or teachers with dual certification.
Yes.
So that's an amendment to be made here to be a goal that comes straight out of the strategic plan that we just talked about.
Correct.
So...
We'll make sure we update that.
That was the only thing that we've changed here, but we do need to add about...
Number five.
Yeah, and this would be our goal, about hiring a superintendent.
So that would either be one, or two, or three, just because your goals were first in terms of numbers.
Right.
Oh, ours are first, okay, all right. So, bump, all right. And then we did talk a little bit about, or I talked a little bit about communications goal. I think that's even more important now that we're gonna be going through this process and maybe put some specifics down. Unless anybody objects, I can work with Ms. Bacard to drop some language that we can look at next time. Is that acceptable? You can send us some ideas? Is that acceptable, Ms. Bacard?
I'm in.
Okay. Any other comments on goals?
The word has got to South End over to sort of...
Okay. So no other comments on the goals?
No.
Okay. So we will add that back in, Ms. Zagari, for old business next time as well. And then now, we have fiscal year 2018 budget status report from Mr. Mealy, I believe.
Yeah, this is my favorite budget status report of the year, because it really doesn't tell you anything.
Right.
We do the monthly, but we just started, and so while we have some full year July 1 activity, the bulk of our stuff starts on September 1, or the first day of school. And so, looking at the first budget status report of the year, where, where we should be and where we are each year at this point, about 12 percent spend rate, so that's good. But it doesn't tell you much more than that. The only, the only item I would draw our attention to is that we finally got a circuit breaker number yesterday, and it came in lower for percentage than it did the previous year by 5 percent. The benefit, though, when we look at special education tuitions, out-of-district tuition spending, you'll see that Donna and her staff have been very successful in bringing more students back to district, which is better for the students and also better for the budget. And in doing so, while we are 200,000 less than we would have been if it was the same percentage as the previous year, they've brought enough students back to compensate for that. So we're right where we should be as far as the budget goes.
Is that lower percentage a reflection of a smaller appropriation by the legislature, or is that what it is?
Mm-hmm, right.
Is it 65 or 64 percent?
There's a couple of different factors. You've got how many, how many claims are made from the previous year, and then what's the total? Because they actually increase the overall appropriation. But the percentage is in based on the claims that are made. Right.
When do the claim, I'm sorry, when do the claims actually go in, before or after the appropriation is finalized by the... When do you have to put your, your claims in?
To the appropriation?
No, I'm just curious, no, did...
It's the end of the year.
End of, end of the, the...
The previous year.
Yeah.
The fiscal year.
Yeah.
So the budget has pretty much been established.
Right.
So what the appropriation is gonna be is known. It's just now, here's the appropriation, and now that we have the claim, so that answers your question. They're, they're made before, I mean, the appropriation occurs before the claims are known.
That's what, that's what I would say.
Yeah.
And do you know, do... So you're saying the claims, your claims that were submitted for, like, say... So, you're saying the, the claims, your claims that were submitted for, like, say, July of twenty sixteen, okay? That appropriation from the legislature, isn't that FY seventeen budget? Is there, is there FY seventeen budget, is that what you're saying?
Right, so when we put our claim in this past June...
Yep, June.
Right. Then, we're gonna, it's like a reimbursement, it's a reimbursement for the previous year's claims.
Right.
At a percentage.
Okay. So, going forward for this, this, the, the state legislature will, will see that there was a greater need and hopefully they'll accommodate...
Yeah, you would hope.
We, we ask that every year.
Yeah.
We hope for that every year too.
Yeah, and it actually will become clear when we look at...
Yeah.
The charts for the out-of-district.
Which is nice.
Yep.
Well, I just think, you know, just to finish the point, I think it's important that our legislators know, though, we obviously got underfunded, but we're just fortunate because we're working harder on this other end of it to make... So, we're not, our, our, our spend budget is not out of whack, not because of that, because of the work over here.
Yeah, and I have to say, I have to say this, our biggest challenge is that right now, we are reliant on one hundred percent of circuit breaker. And so, when we make our, uh, file our claims and anticipate an amount that we're going to get in the following year and it doesn't come, that has a big impact on our budget. Other towns have, have a percentage, they might do fifty percent or it could be, that's their contingency is what's coming in as the reimbursement. But we've never been able to get out of a hundred percent budget of the, uh, circuit breaker amount.
And other towns are able to roll over some of that circuit breaker money for a year or two so that it's sitting there in the event that, you know, that student might move in or you have that cushion that you need, exactly.
Any other questions on that? Thank you, Mr. Mealy.
Mm-hmm.
Alright, um, I think we're ready to move on to new business. We have a, um, Spanish exchange trip to look at.
Yeah, so as I explained, here's foreign language experience again, uh, they have exchange trips and immersion trips. This is a exchange trip, this is students, um, going on a Spanish exchange immersion trip to Spain. So, very similar to all the questions we had talked about prior, same, uh, same group.
And those kids were here like the first week of school.
Yes, we, I saw pictures of them hiking.
I saw them at a soccer game, yeah.
Yeah.
And they visited a bunch of classrooms.
Yeah.
That's great. Looks like a fabulous trip.
Yeah. I, actually, we went on our honeymoon into a lot of these places, so I actually knew what they were talking about.
Just one note, I, um, I think under my superintendent's report, I forgot, I might have had something else I had to say, but, um, uh, the Live Your Learning Education Fund is how we'll support students.
Yeah, I noticed that.
And we've actually picked the date for the dinner. It's the Saturday before, um, the, uh, Thanksgiving, that's November eighteenth, I believe. Um, and very excited that the Brooks School is actually going to host us in their, um, older or faculty dining room space, which is beautiful, and, uh, they're doing that as a, as a, as free of charge for us so that we can increase our profits. So, uh, we're going up at Brooks on November eighteenth.
That's going to be a great venue.
Um, they also have a kitchen, so we can actually cook it there, so, um, we're very excited. And we'll get a lot more information out, but just, that's the date, it'll be a fun event, um, as I think we all had a good time last year. As always, the food will be great and the service will be subpar.
Can you, the, the, the date one more time, November eighteenth?
November eighteenth, it's a Saturday.
It's a Saturday, not a Friday night?
Saturday, we'll check the date, it's hard to be...
You're right. I can't remember.
Yep.
Alright.
We'll check that.
So, um, this is just a first reading for the, uh, Spanish exchange trip, any, this is the same group we did last year, right?
Same group, yep.
Um, any questions?
Yeah, I just have a quick question. Um, so this is five days out of school for these students, the German exchange is about the same number of days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
You know, it...
Just checking.
Yep.
And it looks like they have a pretty, you know, theoretically, it looks like they go to school several days.
Yes, they do. And, you know, in terms of a, an immersive language experience, you do want to have the kids in country.
Oh, absolutely. Former Spanish teacher here took kids on this trip when I was twenty-two.
It is the November eighteenth.
Yes, thank you. Great. So, we'll look at that next time. Um, now, we're going to review the special education out-of-district enrollment numbers based on, we just started talking about that a minute ago.
Yeah, the intent is that the budget doesn't always tell the story. It's not working.
Okay.
I tried everything.
Yeah, I saw you dancing around.
Well, everything I know.
Okay.
Um, and so, yeah, you can access it online if you're following us that way. So, the intent, the budget doesn't always tell the story. If you look at, um, the cost of, um, special education and out-of-district tuition in particular, over the last few years, you see it going up, um, but it could have gone up a lot more than it has. And that was the intent of, of this chart, to show the impact that the programs are having. And as I said, you know, the first goal is to have the students in district, that's the best outcome for the students. And at the same time, the budget impact is, is positive as well because, um, I, I list on the, uh, right, the assumptions we're making. The average out-of-district tuition is sixty-five thousand dollars. Um, we have some of those that are really high and those are residential placements and then we have some with our collaborative that are forty or just over forty. Yep. Um, but the average is sixty-five thousand dollars and that's what we used, um, with this. And, and what this does is show the programs that are in place, um, the staff costs that we have to, to man those programs, the number of students, um, that are in the programs and then the tuition costs if those students were out of district instead of in our program. And you can see the impact, uh, here is, uh, for FY eighteen projected to be about five and a half million dollars, um, is the delta. So, at a, a cost of one point two million for the programs, um, that's six point seven million in tuitions, um, that we may, may have had. And you, you can see on the right there, the, um, how that's gone up as we've increased in added programs, um, and, and added staff to the existing programs so that we can service more students.
If you remember when the Walker Report was done a number of years ago in the district, it was to add programs to see this exact type of cost avoidance, um, and, you know, and then we also believe that keeping kids in their home schools makes sense for families and kids. So, um, you know, we did our best to really say which of these kids would actually go out of district. We, you know, we can't be, you don't really know, you can't count on every one of these kids, but we did try to do our best. These are programs to support environments for kids to be able to stay in district and here are the numbers. It's quite stunning when you look at it.
It really isn't, um, the additional significance to the building of these programs is really having an understanding of who the appropriate certified professional staff, uh, that you need to have in these programs. So, you know, you don't want to just build a program and pluck, you know, a moderate special needs teacher or put people in there without the appropriate training. So, you really want to start digging in and looking for those, um, severe special needs teachers, uh, look for those board-certified behavior analysts that can work with those students as well, looking for people who have experience with medically fragile children. Um, right now, as we've discussed before, we're, um, keeping our eighteen to twenty-two-year-old children in school, so we've went out purposefully this spring to find a couple of, um, teachers that have severe special needs, BCBA, and extensive experience in working with transitioning students who are eighteen to twenty years old, have significant challenges, need, um, ADLs, you know, travel training, those types of things because you want them to be able to jumpstart these programs appropriately. So, it's a good program for students and to keep them here in North Andover. Um, so we really did a good, um, analysis of who we have sitting in what seats at the programs. And then the second piece that's important in helping is having that vertical alignment of programs so that everyone's from pre-K to the high school or talking to each other and have a good, solid understanding of what it is, what our goals are across the district for these students, which helps, you know, keep the students in town where they belong with their friends and family.
Those numbers make sense to people, how we calculated the... Okay.
And then the two charts, the first chart just illustrates, um, that first set of data we were looking at. And the second one really tells an interesting story. If you look at the out-of-district tuition, um, since oh-eight, uh, you can see where it, it started to go up from oh-eight and then, um, went up until FY eleven and then it, it had a drop, but then it had a steady climb. And if you recall FY fourteen, that was the year that precipitated the, um, the request for the stabilization fund.
Right.
Because we just could not sustain that kind of a jump in out-of-district tuition. And then what it shows the rest of the way is the efforts that Donna was just talking about of, um, creating programs that we can, um, be, benefit students by staying in district and provide service as well. You can see it kind of stemmed the tide and now we're projecting for this year for it to actually go down as far as out-of-district tuitions go.
And you guys know that when I arrived, I was very concerned about this trend and I feel like we have, um, you know, appropriately, and this is always difficult to talk about. If there's a student who, for, for very significant needs, needs an additional, you know, an out-of-district placement, that's part of what we do as education institution and as a town. But if we could service them better, um, within the school district, that's what we should do too. So, um, you know, this, if the trajectory had continued, this would have really bankrupted this system. Um, you know, because it's just not sustainable to see the level of growth that this town saw in the seven years prior to FY fifteen. Um, you know, unfortunately, they then are, as many towns and cities are having these conversations, you start making decisions where you're unfortunately pitting groups of people against each other, which isn't helpful to anyone. So, this was really, um, and, and has been a focus of our work because this has, could be a lever that can mean all the other stuff we're trying to do can't get done. Reduction of class size, et cetera, et cetera.
How much did we have to go into the stabilization fund last year?
Two hundred thousand.
Two hundred thousand.
That's...
And that was because of the circuit breaker reimbursement.
Right, right.
That came back lower, it was a hundred thousand dollar circuit breaker reimbursement that came down lower than we expected.
Right.
So, and we didn't, we weren't seeing a decrease. The way we can cover for that this year is the, is the, is the decrease.
Correct.
Right, it can certainly change.
And, of course, a family could move in next week. Um, I will say, though, that Donna and Jim and our new out-of-district coordinator, um, who just came on Sandy O'Connor, they meet, what, every two weeks? I mean, this is something we track very, very closely.
And, and Donna could confirm this, but the last few years, we've seen that most of the changes take place early in the year and then not too much happens after that. I did, you get pla, uh, you know, forty-five day placements or things like that. But there hasn't been a lot of change after the start of the year.
Well, it's probably not great for students to, children to have, to make a change mid-year, right?
Yeah, it's not preferred, um, one comment I wanted to make with regard to what Dr. Price was saying about our meeting. So, Jim, Sandy O'Connor, who's our new out-of-district coordinator, myself, are really, um, dedicated at really not only just analyzing, um, the student data and where the students are going, but really looking at the staff, um, what we have in place and how we can shift what we're doing around to ensure that we are able to manage and plan ahead and be considerate about students that, you know, we want to bring back and build those relationships and ensure that we have the appropriate staff in place as well. So, it's really a team effort.
And we've brought students back into the district, I mean, that's also very difficult.
Yes, and we're continuing to, we're working on a couple this week, in fact, so.
The other comment is Lucy McCarthy actually, uh, this year has already also taken over the special education transportation, which is a lot of the out-of-district. Last year, our, our out-of-district special education transportation went a little haywire.
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, we feel like the increased oversight by Lucy, who really understands transportation and buses, will help us bring that down. So, you know, things like partnering with other towns, if we have a kid going to the same placement saves us money. If we have kids in different parts of the town going to the same placement, having two kids on a bus rather than one. So, we're really trying to make sure, because that can be another driver of this challenge.
Driver of it.
There we go. Um, but I, I will say, um, that, this is not included in this, it's just tuitions, but special education...
Correct.
Transportation is over a million dollars more. So, one of the things, um, is we've, uh, we've kind of did some reorganization to put a transportation expert on the special education transportation.
Very good.
No action, we just wanted to show you this.
Right, any other inquiries?
Yeah, thank you, that's helpful.
It is helpful. Interesting to see.
I would just like to say, great work by all the staff.
Yeah.
And Dr. Straight and Mr. Mealy and our special education staff, it's, uh, this is a good trend.
It's a very good trend and, uh, it takes the help of the, um, program staff and the principals as well, you know, collaborating with us too.
And the community to understand that we are now including kids that traditionally may not have been included and although it may be at times a little tricky, it, it is actually better for the system in many ways and one of them is financial.
Absolutely.
Very good. Thank you. The last item of new business is the first reading...
Yep.
Um, about the, um, addition of positions and there's, looks like a request to suspend the rules.
Yes.
So, each year, we look at, um, needs at the beginning of the year, um, sometimes it's only a point two, um, that we might need. This one happens to, um, we need more than just a point two, we need additional positions, um, for some good reasons. We have a TA position and a BT position, uh, that are needed because those students are coming back in district, but they need one-to-one teaching assistants to support them. So, that certainly pays for the additional position. Uh, what we need in, um, summary is a point one specialist teacher at sergeant that will allow the principal to ensure that all of the teacher preps and, um...
Yes, just to explain, this one's probably the most complicated, so, um, we, when we made Karen Leahy the principal of sergeant, because we had reduced the number of PE classes kindergartners were having, which was a move that we needed to do to be able to increase the number of elementary classrooms across the district, if I'm remembering this correctly. We didn't actually replace her point four PE position, that's how we, um, were able to, to do that. We need to replace the point one specialist, it probably won't be PE, it'll probably be a librarian, to really make the preps work. So, we currently have some kindergarten situ, uh, two kindergarten teachers that have two preps on a Monday, one on a Tuesday and one on Wednesday and nothing on a Thursday and Friday, which really is not working for our, um, our kindergarten kids. Contractually, we're meeting the obligation, but in terms of what's best for the teachers and frankly, what's best for the students to not have a special at all on Thursday and Friday is not really working.
Especially at that age, yeah.
And especially, I, I want to point out, you know, we are putting our kindergarten teachers, um, under increased stress this year with the transition to the new building. And it just feels for a point one, this is the right thing to do, but I want to be really clear, we are meeting the contractual obligation, um, but for a point one, um, supporting the teachers, supporting, uh, you know, a new principal who's figuring out the whole schedule, this just really feels like the right thing to do for, um, our kids, our teachers, um, and for sergeant.
How do you hire a point one?
Um, so, you know, if you've met the amazing Karen Leahy, you know she knows everybody in town and, um, can find, you know, a retired teacher, um, to come in and do that. I mean, she has a vast network of people, so I'm confident, she's confident she'll be able to hire this.
Okay.
Because it's like one day a week and somebody may want to come in and just do it, you know, two or three classes one day a week. So, just to be really clear on that one, um, I think it's the right thing to do and I think it's the amount of money. Um, you know, and we are, Jim will probably talk about this, but we do have some turnover savings. We're still trying to figure out what this number is, but we're confident, and he'll talk about the amounts, we'll be able to cover this within turnover savings.
Exactly. Um, so, to talk about the funding, the, um, into, total anticipated cost is sixty-nine thousand five hundred. Um, of that, the, uh, which one was it, Gilli, was it the, um, adjustment counselor?
Yes.
It's going to be funded through a grant, the additional time for that. Um, the turnover savings, we're anticipating using that for the point six TA at Franklin and the specialist, the point one specialist, um, totaling eighteen thousand five hundred. Right now, a- and if you recall with turnover savings, it's a competent, it's a net of, uh, the difference between the salaries of outgoing teachers or staff and the incoming, um, minus the column increases because we don't budget for either one of those. Um, and the column increases have been around ninety-five thousand dollars a year. So, we're estimating right now turnover savings to be about eighty-five thousand dollars, um, for this year. And so, we're using eighteen thousand five hundred of that, uh, to fund those two positions. And then the last two, as I said, come from the elimination of the, um, out-of-district tuitions to, uh, pay for the TA and the BT.
And just a little bit more on the point two teaching assistant, we had a student, um, just so we're really clear, we had a student who went to Franklin, we thought they would not need a full-time teaching assistant, it's clear that they do. This is just based on need. And the point two adjustment counselor, um, is actually to, uh, keep Pete Kincanon, who ran an amazing program at the high school for a number of years, on to help us transition as we build our social, emotional learning programs. Um, and his presence as a mentor, support in working with kids is a huge way for us to keep continuity in SEO.
And just one other reminder, that any position that's approved by the school committee after the budget has been approved are only good for that year and would have to be included in the budget request for the following year.
Okay. So, we are asking to suspend these rules because we'd really like to get going on these positions. Um, we will obviously post the positions and go through the process. Um, we will obviously post the positions and go through the process. Uh-oh, should I have not have said?
Nope, that's okay.
Okay.
He's distracting me.
Okay. So, we are asking to suspend the rules, just 'cause we'd hate to have to wait two more weeks to get these people on.
You started to make a motion, Mr. Trissey? Are you going to continue? I didn't hear it. So, Mr. Trissey made a motion. Mr. McDevitt, second. Um, any discussion? My quick question is, if we, for some reason, didn't suspend the rules, you could still post a job, or you just couldn't hire them? But you'd like to hire them immediately?
We'd have to bring people on as long-term subs to line the gap, and it would just be better not to.
Not to have to do that for kids, obviously. Exactly. For the kids, it's not good. Exactly. Okay? Um, all in favor to suspend the rules?
Aye.
Aye. Next. Would anybody like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion that we approve the requested additional positions for the remainder of the 2017, 2018 school year in the amount of $69,500, is that?
Correct.
$69,500.
Motion by Mr. Trissey, second by Mr. McDevitt. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's also a 5-0. Great.
Thank you.
Hawaii. Um, that brings us to, um, public comment. Does anybody have any public comment?
I'm just sure we should pull out our phones and start reading.
Yeah, I know. Right, 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 right. Good for you, I appreciate that.
I will be joining in, uh, three years, so I'm just kind of in advance.
Eager.
It's a night out, we get it, we get it.
No, but seriously, we really do appreciate you being here.
Yes. So, um, does anybody have anything they need to update or want to comment from the, the board, before we bolt?
I do.
Yes.
Um, so I have a couple announcements from NAIPAC. Um, on October 22nd, which I believe is a Sunday afternoon, Eliza Goodell is a neuropsychologist, and she's going to be having a parent panel at the library on educating people, like, when parents wanna do, does my kid need to be tested? She's gonna come in and answer questions about that, talk about what neuropsychological testing is. Um, and there'll be parents there to share their experiences. Uh, so it's October 22nd. The time is still to be determined, but I believe it's in the afternoon.
At the library?
At the library.
Parents who have, um, children under, let's say, age six, or at any point?
Nope. Anybody can be tested neuropsychologically.
Okay, I didn't know if they're focusing on, um, some of the younger kids or not. Okay.
Nope, not all.
Do you mind if I just add to that answer? Um, so, when you're talking about neuropsych, I think that was a really excellent question that you asked, because two things could happen. One, parents of students with, um, special needs students may think they're the only ones that really need to attend this. But quite frankly, all parents would be interested in attending this for a number of reasons, because, one, it's valuable information for them. But secondly, what we're finding in general across the board is a lot of parents are coming for minor issues that their child might be having and looking to have a neuropsych. And the neuropsych is pretty extensive, time-consuming, fatiguing assessments for children. So, it's really beneficial for everybody to come and hear what this is really all about. So, that would be my one commentary about it.
Yes, that was my next part, with, everybody's encouraged to attend. No, that's okay. Your, your explanation was much better than mine. Um, and then my second announcement from NAIPAC is that Understanding Our Differences is rolling out again this year, so we're bringing that back. And NAIPAC is in desperate need of volunteers. Um, one really easy way we're gonna implement volunteers this year is to shadow somebody. So, if you're, you're afraid to just jump in and work with the kids on the programs, um, you can go and shadow somebody who is going to do it. And I can promise you, and I think Ms. Maybley can, um, support this, if you do it once, you'll love it. It's a, it's a great experience.
Should I be willing to be someone to be shadowed? Uh, it's fantastic, and I think people who they come once to help, they wanted to know when they can come again. It's really exciting. Great experience.
So, look for that email and sign up sometime in the next month.
Any other updates from anyone? Yeah?
Yeah, I'll give, I'll give you a couple things. First of all, I went to the PICC, which is the, um, what does that stand for? Parents in the College Process Committee.
Right.
Um, at the high school this morning, and they had a two-hour meeting. Um, they have four meetings through the year. We have some of the best supports for children who are, for students who are looking at college, and for, for parents to be able to support those students in that. So, I just really wanna give a shout out to the high school, um, for doing those. Um, our website is bar none terrific. Um, I would say, any parents from any community could really benefit from looking through the materials that are available on our guidance site. The volunteers have put together huge lists of all the college fairs, um, in New England. Um, open houses at colleges all over the east coast, and it's really terrific stuff, and I just commend people to that. Um, October 14th is the New England Scholastic Band Association Marching Band Competition at North Yandover High School on the new turf. So, we're very excited for that. It starts at 5:00. Um, and, uh, I was asked to help give out awards for that, so I'm really looking forward to it.
That's great.
Um, most of you guys know that I had a marching band student, was a marching band student. Love that stuff. And, uh, again, going back to the, um, the college thing, October 17th is financial aid night. Um, and we have a wonderful speaker from Merrimack College that comes in and talks to families about approaching financial aid for college, because we all know, um, college costs are really, um, out of this world. And as we, in North Yandover, prepare our children for career and college, we really need to, to figure out how we can help them get there. So, that's gonna be a really terrific night, if people have an opportunity to get out there, even if you haven't had children yet. October 17th.
Just anticipating the request, I don't remember how it turned out, 'cause I think I was, um, incapacitated last year. But, Mr. McGrath always comes forward with a request to waive the, um, what do you call it, the, the fee?
That's right, the custodial fees.
You may wanna just try to get out in front of that one. I mean, they're, they're, they're gonna come in front of us. I don't know.
I thought we kinda got out in front of it last year, it was my recollection, but I don't-
Well, I, I think, I don't remember how it turned out. I don't think I was here.
It's a timing issue too. Sometimes there's other events that mean we don't even have to charge, because it's already getting done.
Right.
So, it will depend.
Yeah, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, that is an annual.
And, and just one last thing that, um, here at the schools, Rick Gorman, EJ Foltz from the police department have been promoting. This Saturday, at the Great Lawrence Vogue from 4:00 to 8:00, the Merrimack Valley Prevention and Substance Abuse Project will be holding an educational fair for parents, for anyone, from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. And, um, North Yandover Police will be involved with their hidden-in-plane sight activity like they had at National Night Out. Uh, and it's just a great, uh, opiate awareness and drug awareness program. Uh, and it's free for anyone to go, and once again, it's Saturday at the Great Lawrence Vogue, 4:00 to 8:00. And that's an organization that we work really closely with, with Cheryl Barzac, and, um, our nurses and other folks here in the district, so.
Okay. Um, I had two things. Um, one, and I'm not gonna remember what this was called, but you probably have all seen it. On November 2nd, there's gonna be, um, a open meeting, master plan meeting, so the, um, towns getting together, putting, um, the, a committee is already, I think, mostly formed, and they're gonna be looking for public input on the, basically, the 20-year master plan for the town, looking, going forward. So, um, I, I got the impression from the presentation that I saw this morning, that there's gonna be different stations. You can talk to different people about any interest from, I wanna see more trails, I'd like to see, you know, a new building, whatever. Uh, there's gonna be opportunity for public input. They're really looking for that, because, um, they're looking 20 years down the road. And the, um, this morning, John Waters was, came to the, um, PTO president's meeting and talked about this. He's on the committee. And they've looked at, like, the master plan from 1957 and things like that, and, and, um, you know, towns do look ahead, and then they also look at what they actually did and, and things. So, um, it's really important that people participate, and so if you can mark your calendar for November 2nd, might be another fun night out, um, to go give information to that. And, um, Dr. Price and I did have the PTO president's meeting, um, this morning for the first time this year. Uh, and talked about the start of school and various things, and there are new presidents, and presidents who were here last year, and they're probably are gonna be sending us evil texts. Right, we just could not, but it was pretty brutal to be sitting here with them and not be able to tell them.
I would like to say that to those PTO co-presidents, um, you know, please understand that we were trying really hard to orchestrate this in a way that was fair to all people, and it was hard to sit in the room with them this morning. It has absolutely no reflection on how much we appreciate all the work that they do, and how much we value them. Um, so, I, I think we both felt that way.
Yes.
It's a great group of people, and I'm actually really excited. They will be coming in front of us on October 19th to, uh, once again, make a significant contribution to the model classroom.
Could I ask you what, um, enrollment numbers, could we see those for next, next time, you think? Like, where we're at, as far as? I know you don't like to give those in August, September, but how close are we to, like?
So, the official date is October 1, whether we have to, uh, go to the state, so October 5th may be a little close, but definitely October 19th.
Second meeting, October, I think.
That's right.
Yeah, October 19th, that'd be right.
Yeah. And while I have the attention, I got texted by, uh, one of the 15 people watching, who confirmed that there will be no need to charge this year, because the bleachers will be in place. Michelle, let me know.
Thank you for those.
Here's to you, Martin.
That's excellent. Um, do you have any other comments?
Thank you.
There'll be more to come.
More to come, and we got a lot of work to do.
That's right, so.
Yeah.
Big fat plan here in three colors, so. Um, yes, I, um, Ms. Bacard made a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second? Mr. McDevitt made a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all this evening. We are adjourned.